This November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. First action is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
Our motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. All those in favor? Seven in favor. Agenda is approved. Have a comment? No?
Could you please say that into the microphone?
It's okay. I heard it. That's what's important.
Who likes your hair? Approval of minutes? Motion to approve the minutes, Brian?
Motion to approve the minutes from November seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Moved by Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Denise. Are there corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, comments, and commendations and comments from the district?
Good evening. I'll keep this brief because I know Patty is going to be coming in a little bit late to talk and give announcements from the Senate. She is at play rehearsals, just to let everybody know. That's why she'll be a few minutes late. But I wanted to talk about two things, some exciting things happening at the high school. We had, last evening, we had the ACE Mentor Program come to the library. And the ACE Mentoring Program is the Architecture, Construction, and Engineering Mentoring Program. And it partners with area mentors, people within the field, with students. And they work on projects together. And it's to expose students to real-world applications and opportunities, and also to connect students who may be interested in these areas of architecture, construction, and engineering. And I have a little handout I'm going to leave with you because I don't want to, I could go on and on and on about it. But it's something that's really exciting. People are talking about in the community, and it's something that I think you may be interested in learning more about. We had forty-five, about forty-five people come last night, so we're very excited about that opportunity to work with, to partner with local businesses in those areas. And also, we have a group attending the Youth Climate Leaders Academy through the Vermont Energy Education Program, VEEP. They are going with Sean Peschel, Maggie Morrison, and Diane Carroll, and they're going as part of the Sustainability Club. They are going to a leadership academy that's really designed to work with high school students, plan and implement projects for a variety of different, a variety of different things related to climate change. And so we have about six or seven kids attending, and they leave very early tomorrow morning before school even starts.
Six AM.
Yes. What time is it?
Six AM.
Six AM. I met with them today. They're really excited. They have a lot of great ideas, and they're going to come back and share some information with you, hopefully, when they return about their trip. And I have information for you about that as well that you can take with you. So, New Hampshire was invited to go. Any schools in New Hampshire, they were invited to go. And Oyster River, I believe, is the only high school in the state that has, that will be joining this youth leadership opportunity. So we're really excited about to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic. Are there announcements from the district?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Now, okay. Brian Zieger. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Brian?
To, I wanted to thank Suzanne for, my daughter this week had your pancakes that you made. And the first thing she texted me afterwards was that your pancakes are better than my pancakes that I make at home. So, I just want to let you know that you have, must have really good pancakes, because my recipe is...
I want you to know, we rescheduled an appointment so she could go make pancakes.
Yeah. Perfect.
Others?
Yeah.
Denise?
I attended the Coffee House last, I think, it was, I guess it was Thursday night. And it was wonderful experience, and lots and lots of very talented students, but also Mary Beaton from the high school also played the guitar. And so it was really a great time. And it was a fundraiser for Mouth of the River. And the new edition just came out, and anybody, I grabbed an extra copy, so if anybody wants it, you're welcome to it. But it's just, as always, it is amazing what the students put together, like how professional I feel that the articles are, and very, a lot of, very informative. So, it was good.
Here. Others? Kenny?
I'm just kind of speaking from my involvement with the town of Durham. Yesterday, we had our Land Stewardship Committee meeting, and there was just tremendous appreciation for the school board in taking the concerns that a budding residents had and other people who are in that community about our Orchard Drive property, and a great deal of excitement about that property maybe being put into conservation, and how it would really lead to accessibility to public lands, building a bridge between communities. So, bringing thanks to the school board from that Land Stewardship Committee.
Thank you. Others? No? So I don't know if you're Assistant Superintendent or if you're kind of too house tonight?
I can blur them, if that's okay.
Okay.
Actually, first of all, just as Dean noted, I am not Dr. Morse. I am filling in in his stead. I just wanted to note that he is in Washington DC tonight. In fact, as we speak, he's at a black tie function, being honored as Superintendent of the Year. This is the final event of his year as Superintendent of the Year, so it's a great honor to him. And last chance, I could say, congratulations, Dr. Morse, and we're real proud of you. So that explains why he is not here. I did want to mention a couple of quick things, just because there are things coming up in the immediate future. Friday, for those of you who have been looking at the weather, the weather has the potential to be a factor here later this week. And I figured because it's something that we'll be dealing with over the coming months, it was a good opportunity to remind people of the, how we communicate with regards to weather delays and cancellations. Clearly, we make announcements that show up on Channel Nine, on the various local radio stations. But probably the most, the most immediate way we do it is through the Power School School Messenger System. The way that works is whatever phone number, email address, or text number you give us, that is the number that you're communicated to. And one of the things after the first snow or weather issue we get is people who are frustrated that they didn't get the message. More often than not, what happens is we find out they changed their email address, or they changed their phone number, and they did not get it changed in the system. So, just something to be aware of. That is how we notify people. You might, I would encourage people to take a look at their school messenger, the Power School Parent Portal, just to make sure that the information that's in there is accurate. If it's not, reach out to your school and make sure we have accurate information, so we can alert people to that. One other thing I did want to mention is Monday is the follow-up to the middle school visioning session at the middle school, six to eight. All of the people that we invited to participate in that multi-day visioning session at the middle school back in October have been invited back. And anybody else who's interested and wants to be there is certainly welcome to join us. The architect and the team will be presenting sort of the findings that they took from that session. And then they'll also be engaging in a conversation around a series of questions, trying to get to what are the ideas that they really want to incorporate into the design, because obviously, that's the next phase that they move into. So I would encourage people who are interested, six to eight, Monday night at the middle school. And that's in the multipurpose room, right, Jay?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So that's there. Last thing, on your, in your board backup, you should have an email from Dr. Morse regarding the Orchard Drive property. He has had the opportunity to meet with Dennis Meadows, as well as Malin Clyde, and has invited Ellen Snyder from Durham to participate on an Orchard Drive Conservation Committee. And he's certainly encouraging the board to consider the idea of forming a committee to take a look at that issue, and to determine, or to seek out opportunities for potential conservation funding, with the idea of looking at options to put the Orchard Drive property into conservation easement. So he encouraged me to put that before you, and obviously, as a board, you can discuss whether you want to do that tonight, or if you want to wait and do that another time.
Great. Questions for Todd?
Two questions. So what you're mentioning with the weather, will that affect the play on Friday night, depending on school? How will that come into play?
If a cancellation were to occur, it would impact it. My best prognosticator had is, I think, worst-case scenario is we have a messy morning commute. And I don't think it will necessarily result in a cancellation of school.
Okay. So, and then, second thing is, do you need a motion for us if we would want to endorse that committee looking at the Orchard Drive property? Is that something that you would like...
Yes, I would think that the, as a board, you'd need to make a motion to create the committee and then determine who was going to serve on it. Yes.
Do we have to, do we have, does the motion have to determine who's on the committee?
I think, I would assume that you would appoint someone from the committee once the committee is formed.
I would, or?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. The names that you spoke of, that Dr. Morse had mentioned, Malin Clyde, Dennis Meadow, Ellen Snyder, I think would be wonderful people to be on such a committee with great expertise in the field of knowing about conservation easements, and the ability to kind of leverage that. So it's okay with the board? I would put forward a motion that we go ahead and endorse setting up such a committee to look at that Orchard Drive property, and specifically, whether there are options for conservation easement, and other sorts of ways to approach the property.
Could you read it?
That I would put forward, that the board approves setting up a committee with the citizens that have been mentioned, board membership, to look at the Orchard Drive property, and the concept of looking at putting that into conservation or easement.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan. This is a good move to go forward. I don't know, and then, so the idea, I mentioned you were out on the committee.
He's on the stewardship.
So I think you would be the more logical person to be on it.
Okay. Or we both can, if Al's interested too, so.
Okay. Well, you're both mentioned in the letter, so Dr. Morse would have the option of...
Either way.
Okay. Okay.
Just have a question in terms of time, and whether there should be a timeframe for a report, or, or just to leave it open. You know, just, again, just in terms of, you know, not wanting to just let this drag out, obviously, like years, or, you know what I mean?
Right.
If we should put some sort of timeframe on it, in terms of at least an initial report.
Can I, can I make a, how about if you let them meet first?
Okay.
And come back and report?
Yes.
At this point, I am not an expert on this, about putting a timeframe. And I think Dennis and Ellen will probably have a lot better ideas, so that...
Okay.
If they come back after the first meeting, they can do exactly what you said.
In my sense, from my involvement with these individuals in land stewardship, nobody has interest in letting this drag on. And it will really be a matter of very cut-and-dry approaching who are appropriate organizations to approach, understanding the process, and moving that ball forward. Yeah.
Okay. So further questions on this? Ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The committee's authorized. Business administrator?
Student.
No? A student senator. When Patty comes in, you know, we'll just let her report when that happens. So are you ready for the tech? Thank you all for coming. This looks like it's going to be fun.
Yes, I would just like to say that this group is one of my favorite groups to spend time with. They always show up with wonderful toys to play with, and...
So I did send out an email around four o'clock this afternoon with a link to one of the tools that we use pretty much in every building. And so if you're interested in following along using this tool, it's called NearPod. All you have to do is click the link and add your name. And as a teacher, running the presentation, basically, we just took the presentation, the traditional PowerPoint, imported it into this tool. So you can see kind of the student engagement side of it. So I'll give you a couple seconds. Celeste's kind of circulating to make sure you know what to do. As soon as you put in your name, I'll be able to see that you're ready to go. You guys, quick.
Must've missed the boat. She said, you sent an email, and said?
Oh, sorry. We weren't on it. Unless you're on the school board email. But if he just goes to NearPod, he can put in the...
That's okay. I'll, I'll...
Oh, you watch.
Because I can get you a computer.
That's okay. I'll follow along with Al.
Yeah, follow right here. Did you sit on it?
You guys are going to be sharing? So just to mention, as a teacher using this tool, I'm actually holding the controller for it. So my PowerPoint is loaded, and what I can see is your names as students. Last week, we kind of alluded to some of the ways that teachers monitor students. So your names are in here. If, for whatever reason, you tab out of my presentation, your name will turn red. And therefore, I'll know, oh, you know what? Brian's not interested anymore. Maybe he's just following along on the screen. So, just so you know, is this one, it's just one of the ways that we have found ways to monitor while we're going. But we're here to present to you how technology impacts learning at, or CSD. And presenting tonight, myself, I'm Nico. I work at the middle school. Kristin Hughes behind me is Assistant Technology Practitioner. Celeste Best is at the high school. Susan Leifer is at Massway. And Sarah Curtin is at Moheramit. So, one of the features of NearPod that I love is that it untethers you from the front of the classroom. But I've been told by the powers that be that I'm not allowed to leave this podium for filming reasons. So if I was a teacher in a classroom, I'd actually be behind you circulating right now. But for the, for the practice of this presentation, I'm going to be kind of tabbing through as I go. But you guys are getting the NearPod experience, but everyone else can still follow along on the traditional presentation. So how has technology impacted learning at the middle school? This is just a quote from one of our LA teachers. She thinks it's incredibly helpful to have the access in LA, because she no longer needs to have discussions about why certain students are allowed to type while others write on paper, but still always allows paper to be an option. What we're going to kind of talk about tonight is the ISTI standards. That's the International Society of Technology for Education Standards. And so, many teachers lead into a conversation or a new topic with a lead-in question. So what you guys will see on your screens is a question. It says, "How familiar are you with the 2016 ISTI standards?" It's not a trick question. Just give your genuine feedback. You're either familiar, somewhat familiar, or not familiar at all, and submit your answer. What this is going to do is it's going to let me know my audience and what their prior knowledge about what I'm talking about. So if I have a group of students that are really familiar with ISTI standards, I know that I can talk about the next few slides, because they have a lot of prior knowledge. If the majority of my students are saying, "Hey, I'm not familiar with that," then I know I have to differentiate my lesson a little bit, to explain more in-depth the topic that I'm lending into. So just so you can see, right now, I have about, almost a hundred percent. But I'm going to share back with you the results of that poll. So, pretty much eighty percent of the group here is not really familiar at all with the ISTI standards. So you can share back with the class that, you know what? You're not alone. And then twenty percent was somewhat familiar. So now I know, moving forward, that when I talk about these headings of the ISTI standards, that I also probably have to tell you what that standard says for students. So empowered learners, that is one of the ways that using technology in the classroom, that's one of the standards we're satisfying. And the ICANN statement for that is, "I use technology to set goals, work towards achieving them, and demonstrate my learning." So this is an example of a teacher, a social studies teacher in seventh grade. Students were using a choice of tools to show what they've learned on DNA. So they had a choice of creating stop-motion videos, of creating songs with background music, slideshows, screen casts, and pow tunes. So the technology has allowed the kids to kind of show creativity in an education system that is a little bit, somewhat standardized nowadays. So it still lends for the students to show choice and creativity within the same research topics that they've been researching in years past. The second one is digital citizenship. The ICANN statement is, "I understand the rights, responsibilities, and opportunities of living, learning, and working in an interconnected digital world." So, we teach digital citizenship at the fourth and fifth, or fifth and sixth grade level. We teach it throughout all of the grade levels. But we have a specific digital citizenship course for fifth and sixth graders for a whole quarter. And Nick Bellows, the school librarian, teaches the sixth grade model, which is more of a Genius Hour model. And he says that the one-to-one has really allowed his students more choice in how they demonstrate mastery of a concept. So they know that they, when they have a device that allows them to access a wealth of information that's available online, and he doesn't have to limit their selection of topics, the materials covered by their print collection. And also, if a student's motivated to teach themselves a tool, they also have access to a computer to learn and practice a new tool outside of what they're teaching in the curriculum. We create knowledge constructors, which is, "I critically select, evaluate, synthesize digital resources into a collection that reflects my learning and builds my knowledge." So, again, in seventh grade math, we now have students creating videos explaining problems themselves, instead of the teacher. Oops, sorry. I'm not doing really well following in your pod. Anyways, there you are. So, the video's going to play up on the screen, but this is an example video in a fifth-grade math class. The assignment was for students to take a math competency problem and explain it out in their own words using screencasting tools on their device. There's a photo of a group doing it, and there's also an example.
So today, we are going to learn how to add and subtract mixed numbers. For example, two and three fourths.
The video's actually just playing up here for, right now.
Minus negative six and one third. So first, we have to make this negative a positive, because when you take away negative, your value increases. And then, what I like to do is I'm going to make them the same denominator, so twelve over twelve. So times three, times three, plus is nine. Then times four, times four, so this is four. Then we're adding, equals thirteen twelfths.
This is just a plug for the building struggles. You can hear all that background noise, because we don't have a lot of extra spaces for kids to film quietly.
Which is eight, so it'd be eight thirteen twelfths. But since we have, it's an improper fashion, we're going to divide it, thirteen divided by twelve, which is one and one and one twelfth. But then we have to add that one to the eight, so it'd be nine and one twelfth. And since we have all positives, it is positive nine and one twelfth.
So, previously, the teacher would be recording this as an added resource at home and putting it up on her website. But now she's actually choosing student videos and putting those up on her website for students that miss school that day, or just need that added resource, reteaching of that lesson at home when they're doing their homework.
So today...
Sorry. Innovative Designer is the next standard. That says, "I solve problems by creating new and imaginative solutions to a variety of digital tools." They presented here for you, I think, a few weeks ago, but the Save the Earth Club at the middle school, the students identified with the new building. It was an opportunity to poll their peers and understand what their most import, what they felt was most important in a new building sustainability-wise. That concept was turned into a survey. A student created a survey and distributed to all seven hundred students. And the data was collected, and the presentation was created all in one week. So that really lent, and that was student-driven. That was them curious to hear what their peers wanted, so that when they came to talk to the architect, they wanted to say, "This is the majority of what students want. This isn't just the four of us." Computational thinker. "I identify authentic problems, work with data, and use step-by-step process to automate solutions." This is one of my student tech team's students, who said, "More students should be learning coding. It's a useful skill to have, because we are living in the future and should learn the language of the future." So coding is definitely something we have built into our fifth and sixth grade Twenty First Century Skills Unit, but it's something that we're going to participate in schoolwide for National Computer Science Education Week, with, during the Hour of Code in December. Creative communicator. "I communicate effectively and express myself creatively using different tools, styles, formats, and digital media." This is an example of a Flipgrid, which is one of the tools we have out here. World Language Department has been so thrilled by these devices, which they had such limited access to last year, especially when it comes to speaking and listening assessment. Because now they can use a tool like Flipgrid, and this is from the World Language Department as a whole, they didn't even individually want to send me a comment. They wanted to unitedly send me a comment about how now they can assess interpersonal communication by having students film their conversations, then review for grading. With this method, they can assess the competency within one or two class periods, whereas before, it would take them close to two weeks to assess every single student. So that's had a major impact. And then global collaborator, which says, "I strive to broaden my perspective and understand others and work effectively in teams using digital tools." And this is an example of one of our eighth-grade LA teachers. They're participating in the Global Read-Aloud, writing the book Refugee. And they've actually connected with schools in Texas and Canada. And every week, the students post about the newest chapters that they've read, about what they wonder, about what they predict is going to happen in the book. And they share their own experiences and how they can relate to the characters. So really, taking an individual's perspective and broadening it globally. So those are the ways that it's impacted us. And actually, Kristin's going to come up and talk about how the tools have made it more accessible for all students.
So you just do yours, and I'll do yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In my role as an Assistant Technology Practitioner in the district, I have the privilege of working with students across all four schools, from our preschool kiddos to our big, tall seniors getting ready to go to college. And part of my job is to make sure that the students have access to all the technology to support needs and accommodations that they might have, whether due to needing an individualized education plan, or for having a five-year-old, or even just a student who needs a little extra assistance. So I have a few examples of some of the things that our students have done, and they really fall under the empowered learner standard. We're really making sure that every student, no matter what their needs, can display their knowledge. So here we have an example of some writing that a student with some developmental disabilities did at the elementary school level. And previously, getting pen to paper for her was a pretty tremendous challenge. And when I emailed her mom to ask permission to use this writing, she wanted to talk a lot about how this program that she's been using has been really, really, you know, life-changing for her. She's more motivated to write, and all you can see is, it's her writing, and then as she writes, images appear above it. Now she can read her work back to her peers and to her family, so that they can all understand what she wants to describe to them. So this was an assignment about skunks. I also have the privilege of working with some middle school students. And what we've been focusing on primarily in the fifth grade is teaching them about some research tools that involve speech to text, so they talk and it writes, and then text to speech, so that they can have things read aloud to them. These tools were primarily invented for individuals who were blind. But we can now use them for individuals with dyslexia, or specific learning disability, who have challenges getting their knowledge out on paper, or who could spend their time decoding and working to read a five-hundred-page novel, or they could sit back and listen to the work and actually really understand what's going on. So I have a fifth-grade student here.
So how do you like your laptop?
I like it a lot. I mean, the guys in the old school laptop with the cars. And we're going to get them for maybe an hour a day. And I can bring cars and stuff like that. And I love that I'm loved, but I do.
And you're going to take it home, right?
No, it's like ours.
But I can?
Yeah.
Okay. What about these my speech to text and text to speech?
Um, typically, it's exactly my thing, so I, I'm crazy about that. Anytime I can, I'll use it. Because I, I'm an actor, so I talk a lot. I talk a lot, so I always... I talk, I'm talking about you a lot. And then, if it's scripted or something, like for my student-led conference, I, you know, I can, I can, like, in my words, like what I'm saying.
Well, and what about, do you think that this technology's helpful for just you, or for...
I think for, well, most of the school, yes.
Cool. Is that a goal there for everybody?
Yeah, because some people just like it, some people like to take it.
Right, exactly.
Considering a lot of us have, but...
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that.
That was one hundred percent unscripted. I just grabbed him, pulled him into the hallway, and said, "Can I ask you a few questions?" And I got long emails from parents saying, "Oh, he's going to love this." And obviously, he did. So what it's really showing is that students who might have struggled before to get written work complete in the classroom are really able to express themselves without the stress of having to actually put pen to paper and encode all of their writing. And finally, I have a quote from a high school student who does experience dyslexia. And the student was able to really blossom in the past few years with having the ability to access all of this text adapted for her. So she's, you know, achieving all of her standards. She's doing very well in all of her classes. She's taking really reading-heavy, intensive classes. And because of assistive technology and having laptops and iPads available to her, she's really able to participate to her fullest extent. And I love how she, I think this, her quote of, "I think being able to do this has really helped me along with my learning and truly helped me grow as a student and build up my confidence." So many of our students that I work with have struggled for years and really don't see themselves as learners. And giving them this chance to really demonstrate what they know, whether they're speaking to a paper or making a video or doing a slideshow or doing a Screencastify in any way that they can produce their knowledge. And it's allowing them that chance to shine, really. And a lot of our students really need that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Celeste Best. I'm a science teacher here at the high school. And so we're going to talk about what's going on here in this building. And as you are well aware, we are not one-to-one yet. In fact, this year, in our progress with technology, we're really in the research phase and looking at best practices for being one-to-one in a nine-through-twelve school. And then our goal next year will be to really bring in the professional development for the faculty and staff here so that we are 100% ready and on board when we do go one-to-one in 2021. And the excitement around that is really kind of great. I've been here for over 20 years. And it wasn't very long ago that at the high school, a lot of the feeling was, "No. We don't want to be one-to-one. We don't want to have technology." And then there's been a huge shift. In fact, I stood here in this room in front of the faculty and asked them to give me their opinions. And I had over 60, I had 68 people respond to that survey. That's a huge number here at the high school. And it was 100% support of, "Yes, we are ready to go one-to-one. Let's start looking at this." Because the middle school went one-to-one, we were able to get nine computer carts from the middle school to add to the carts that we had here at the high school. And every department has two. And the departments that didn't have any now have one. So every one of our elective departments has access to a minimum of 23 computers on a daily basis, plus library cart. And we share computers among departments. And so what that has allowed has really increased the blended learning that exists here in the high school. And you can see some examples of different things that we're able to do. And that has allowed teachers to realize that technology can be an absolutely awesome tool to use with curriculum and to use with things that they're already doing. I'm not saying that every day has to be filled with technology in their classes, but teachers are starting to see, "Well, here's a great lesson. I'm going to make it an awesome lesson because I can add this one component. And I can put the work of my students out globally so that it's not just the teacher who sees it. It's just not just the students in that classroom, that parents get to see it through blogs or video blogs or postings or the writing in MOR, that are things that are assisted by technology. They're not run by technology. The teacher is still absolutely critical, but it's another level." As a science teacher, I am able to actually have my kids do science with the use of technology. We're not just looking at experiments. We're not just talking about Mendel. We're actually repeating experiments. We're getting ready, in one of my classes, to test muscle fatigue. And if we didn't have the technology and the programs available to that, my kids would just be looking at data that someone else did instead of collecting their own data. You can also see up here, it opens the doors for project-based learning, flipped learning environments, which is where a lot of the presentation of vocabulary and very lower-level Bloom's content is provided at home. So when the students come to class, they're ready to jump in and work on what we used to say, "Go home and do this by yourself alone without an expert there to help you." Now, they're learning the words, maybe copying a picture or a graph at home. And then they're coming in and they're doing the really hard analyzing and synthesis together with their classmates and with their teachers. A lot more performance-based assessment is happening because we have the availability of the technology. Like you've heard from the middle school Flipgrid and our world language teachers. They are, on a daily basis, I'm getting questions of, "What can I do next? What else are we able to do with this?" And everyone has this excitement, which is going to make that change, which we all know can be really scary. But that change to going one-to-one, there's already an excitement building about it. It's not a nervousness. It's now, "When are we going? We're getting ready." And so I'm really excited about what this year and next year holds. Here's a quote from one of our English teachers, "That the availability of technology has drastically changed what I am able to do as a teacher." Things they always wanted to do, but they were held back from that because of access to technology. And now they're just growing as a professional and doing more with their students. And here's another one from, and this is not me. It's a high school science teacher. It was not me. "I love learning new tech to help my students show what they know. This is a great way to demonstrate learning outcomes. Show what they know. That's the key. That's why we do what we do." And now we can give our students options. Instead of just write the paper, just make the PowerPoint, just take the test. It's like, okay, how do you want to demonstrate your knowledge and your depth of understanding to us? And here are all these tools that you can use. And it allows kids to use their strengths. Students who are very strong in arts and music are able to bring that into all of their classes. They can use GarageBand to design music and then sing a song about a self. And they absolutely love that opportunity to see that in different disciplines. We can be a little isolated here in the high school. You know, I'm just going to English class or I'm just going to science class. And the use of technology has allowed us to bridge those gaps so that the kids can see the cross-curriculum connections that they can use and that, yes, they are going to use this outside of just that one class that they are in. And now I'm going to turn it over to our two elementary technology integrators. And we're going to get to have some playtime and let you use some technology.
Hello, I'm Susan Leifer. I am the tech integrator at Masteway Elementary.
I'm Sarah Curtin. I'm at Moheram at Elementary School. Thank you. So it's funny, I'm listening to my colleagues and what they're doing in high school. We start at the very basic level in kindergarten, first, second, and third, and fourth grade. So we're going to show you what we do at their level and to meet their standards so that when they get to high school, they can really pull it all together and synthesize, which is pretty exciting. So we have a little video for you.
So we're going to be the voiceover to this video. As it's going, we'd rather show you than stand here and just flip through a PowerPoint. However, we did include a PowerPoint that aligns all of our teachings to the ISTI standards. If you are interested to look at that later. All right.
I think maybe Wendy emailed that to you. Did you get it? No? And if not, we'll email it to you tonight.
Now, just one part in this video, right in the middle, it's going to get loud. That was a student choice. It's their music they put in the video, so just don't be startled, all right?
Bears lose tooth.
So this is kindergarten, digital storytelling. And they had to do some storyboarding to plan out their beginning, middle, end of the story.
His cave. Bear has a loose tooth.
This is our stop-motion unit. The third graders do a unit learning all the bones in the body. They do stop motion and they talk over it. Our ARVR, where we explore the solar system. And then our fourth graders go in and they can explore internal systems.
This is the Makey-Makey. And they learned electrical circuits and how to make it work and then play the piano. You'll get a chance to try that tonight.
We do an entire coding unit. We think that's very important. Just the 21st century thinking, the vocab that goes with it, algorithms, problem-solving, collaboration. All sorts of great things can come from programming. And then we have robots. Here is our Team Desert. It looks like Alexander might have taken, oh no, here we go. This is the music. So here, they did different biomes where they had to adapt their robot to work in the biome. Our Ozobots are light-sensing robots. We learn about light waves and colors while also learning about robotics. Here, we've coded our Ozobots to show the different dances bees do to let the hive know where the honey is or the flowers.
This was DevKit last year? They came and did a week-long how to design your own app.
And then Coding in Cocoa, which we would love you to come to this year. And then we also join with communities like UNH. And we do Science Mondays where UNH engineering students come in. We have the Luna Cats this year. And they work with NASA to design different robots that would actually go and retrieve soil samples off Mars. So they come and they teach our kids some engineering, egg drops, bridges. And then they actually bring their robots and teach us some robotic lessons.
And then both elementary schools will be hosting their Hour of Code events called Coding in Cocoa. So they come to school at 7:45 and they code for an hour. We have, I think presently, both schools have over 100 students registered to come before school. They'll do some coding and then they leave with a cup of cocoa. And they get their sticker saying they participated in the Hour of Code. You ready to check out some cool toys? We'll show you all the neat things that we get to do with elementary school students. And feel free to ask questions. I think we've set up most everything that we do throughout the year at both schools. So thank you.
He used to be, "Are you smarter than a..." It was fifth grader, now it's, "Are you smarter than a second grader?"
What's that?
[inaudible]
So, here's our website.
Okay.
That's, uh...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we, actually finally, I'm really happy. All, I mean, these are all, I was crying when I saw this. And I actually have Sarah's, like, pet, the senior's housing coach. She loves me, she's right there. And then I stand through, mine always go with us, uh, around the side lanes. It's like government stuff. But we've kind of crammed along. We actually have, uh, all the, yeah, so we have, like, the town, like, information. Stude Town Guide, we had, uh, what else have we got? So, it was a good one, so. I don't know if you noticed, but I go to a conference or a presentation, it's a great place. Everyone wants to come to the conference. And I remember, I have, I have a beautiful, I have just, it's really beautiful. Now, I can't, it's beautiful. So, then, I think, that's, uh, yeah. Yeah. Well, I think the last, now, I love this last, iPhone, they made a lot of, they're pretty.
It's just kind of hard for me to guess. Proud of you.
Yeah.
Question everything else we said.
Yeah, I'm telling you, why you do the work.
Yeah.
So, now, it's, uh...
I think it's, I think, uh, you have everything.
Nothing, uh...
Yeah.
And it was, like, the topic, uh, touch the topic that's...
So, is that, yeah, yeah.
Is that way, should we record that?
Yeah, it's the way they're talking.
Yeah. They're both thinking, both are going to be done.
So, mostly, uh, so, so, she's like, she's like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he said, you know, obviously, it's a little, you can swap out, we need to go.
I saw, I saw, we, this was, uh, yeah, they're, like, especially, like, you, and it's great, like, it's, uh, so, that's, uh, that's, uh, yeah.
We're very over it.
And, yeah, we said, and, yeah, we're gonna miss this, no, they're gonna leave so early tomorrow, and I could hit, and then, right, yeah.
Jerry's, uh, five, or, yeah.
Yeah.
So, love it all, or, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Pretty wild.
It was funny, though, I was, I'm not my shot, I'm gonna break my heart right now. Yeah, so, and then, she, let's see, she was trying, it's gonna happen, but, I don't know, uh, I didn't, uh, I didn't have, uh, the, also, they were, uh, talking to, uh, there's a broad, really, so, it's, uh, it's, uh, I would say, uh, thank you, uh, uh, five, uh, which is, uh, just, uh, thank you.
I just, I just, I just, I'm, uh, dying, uh, for, uh, what did he have, uh, stickers?
And this, uh, everyone, uh, thinking, uh, I want mine, uh, this is, this is, this is my, yeah. Yeah. Actually, they, they, uh, so, and, 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 uh, the best, uh, I'm sure, uh, can you, uh, what, 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 uh,
you know, how it gets designed and tech, you know, architecture and the building process, how that somehow gets integrated into this where they can, because I'd like to see people get into trades and architecture and, you know, management, you know, building management, construction management, things like that, which is not always, some of it's physical, some of it's not, but you kind of need a little bit of each to know, to be successful.
And just to add to that, in seventh and eighth grade, our STEM program, they use a program called SketchUp Pro. And a ton of our students, even I found a sixth grader that had figured out how to download it out of the software center, which is a student, it's a student-approved software, they just haven't had a formal instruction. And now he's already built his own mansion in 3D model. He could 3D print it if he wanted to, and he showed it to me today. I was, hey, that's great, but like, those interests, now they, they can, they go out and find it. And this kid knows how to build a mansion without even Mr. Silvario teaching him the basics of this SketchUp tool, which is what my husband, who's a civil engineer, actually uses in designing some of his roads and bridges, so.
Kenny?
Just a general thing, and I mentioned to some of you, I remember many, many years ago, having a conversation with Tom about, there's the concept of you're really good at something, and how do you get better? And, and I know when we talked about Barrington, and one of the big drivers was, we saw Barrington as a tool to not only stabilize our school district, but to enhance our school district. And I think that's, you know, with our, every learner and all the different philosophies our school has, one of the real drivers here is how do we continue to get better? And it takes effort, it takes leaping off of ledges, it takes taking risks, it takes learning new things. And I think this demonstrates that wonderfully, and we're all so much better for it, and thank you for all your efforts.
Absolutely.
And if I could just jump in, I do think it's really important to emphasize the value of the tech integrator positions that we have created. We've always in this district had people, teachers like Celeste, that really value technology, and they work real hard to incorporate it into their classrooms and, and make sure they stay ahead of things. But I think that what we're seeing now, now that we have the tech integrators at elementary schools, and we have one at the middle school, we're starting to see that continuity across the system, which we'll eventually start to see even greater results at the high school, which I think is very exciting. I also think it's, it's worth noting that the tech integrator position at the middle school has been there for four years, Jay, five years?
Seven years.
Seven years. Goodness gracious. Seven years. And I do think part of the reason why the middle school was so ready to take on the one-to-one initiative was that, exactly that. And I see that, you know, as we talk about the one-to-one at the high school, I know tech integration is going to be something we're going to talk about, and I think it's important to point out the value of that and the wisdom of the board to create the two positions at the elementary school to really bring it all together. So nice work, everybody.
Thank you.
So will there be a tech integrator position at the high school?
I, I think at some point, that's going to be a conversation about the need for somebody to take that same role professional development-wise at the high school, not this year, but as in future years.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Patty is back. So we postponed the Student Center report until you came back. So.
Tom, did you want to tell her about all the committees she's on?
So we had our last dress rehearsal for the play that opens tomorrow, so that's why I was late. So sorry about that. Okay. Student Center report. First of all, the play, Thursday, Friday, Saturday this week, 7:00 PM. It's really, really good, you all should go, it's going to be fantastic. And preseason for winter sports has started, so swimming has already started, and then all of the other sports will commence very shortly. I think, I know my hockey team starts practices the Monday after Thanksgiving. On December 4th, there's a college info night at the high school. Tomorrow is an, an early action deadline for college applications for a lot of people. So there's been kind of a flurry of activity leading up to that. Thursday, the 15th, tomorrow as well, is a Barrington tour for parents at 9:00 AM, just of the high school. On the 10th and 11th, there's a career, okay, for 10th and 11th graders, so sophomores and juniors, there's a career development program going on right now during flex that is run by the guidance counselor, that whole, those whole, the, hmm, all of those people, sorry. I'm so much on my mind. On the 29th, there's a mental health forum at the high school at 6:30. And the week of the 26th is the week of mental health. Basically, there's presentations on mental health awareness during the day for high, for the students. And college visits will continue through December. So there have been colleges coming and basically talking about what, what they're about, information about their college, just coming here so that we don't have to go all over the world to find them. So those will end in December. So yeah, there's a lot going on.
Okay. Thank you. So we, I think the only action we have is to approve the list of policies for First Read. So Denise, I don't know if you would make the motion to approve those?
Aren't we going to discuss the board discussion of the budget to generate questions? We've got that first.
Yeah, I missed that. Yeah, okay. For discussion on the 2019-20 budget, following the morning workshop that we had.
So you saw the budget, and you've had a chance hopefully to review it, and we're asking if you have any questions that you want to bring to the next meeting. We're meeting, I believe it's on the 28th. We have a specific workshop just for budget, but if there's any other information you need before that time, please let us know now, and then we'll get back to you.
Denise?
So a couple of things that I, I was wondering about that I'd like to add. One of them is as far as the counselor position at the high school. And one of the questions I had is if we can't find the money in the budget to do a full position, would a half-time counselor, would that help, or would that just sort of complicate things because, you know, it, just in terms of the structure of it? So I guess that's one question that I would like to maybe explore, with the goal ultimately of perhaps making that a full-time position, but, you know, as a, as a first step, if we could find enough money to at least start with a half-time, if, if that might help. And I had another question. And then my other thing that we had started to talk about a little bit at the workshop was the loss of revenue due to the plastic, well, the drinks, the, the drinks that have been removed already from, if I'm correct, the elementary school now, that they've been completely removed, if I'm understanding correctly.
Water bottles.
And now, right. And now working on the middle school, and there's been, as we were told at the board workshop, there's been a significant drop in revenue. So my question is, is if we were to sort of put a halt on that for right now, sort of what is the projected, I guess, the, the financial impact of that in terms of additional revenue or what have you? And the last thing that I was wondering about is in terms of the green team, and I know that we have like $20,000 that we put towards the green team each year, and I'm just kind of, and I know they do like an end-of-the-year report to us, but I guess I'm wondering in terms of what they're working on currently, and kind of, again, I'm for sustainability, but if we decide, for example, that we want to continue with eliminating the, the water, you know, the plastic bottles, we have to come up with this other lost revenue somehow, do we, is there still a legitimate need for the, for that green team for those stipends? And I'm not saying we should eliminate them, but I'd kind of like to just find out a little bit more about that.
Sorry. I know at the high school, they have boxed water, and you can recycle those containers. So maybe we could replace the bottle, the plastic bottled water with the boxed water.
So can I, I'll piggyback on to yours. So I actually emailed Steven Lusakis, who's the Vice President of Government Affairs for Waste Zero. I think we should, and I asked him, what is the, the plastic bottle conundrum? And the plastic bottle conundrum is this, is we've potentially, we, we've reduced our revenue, but we're not sure we actually reduced our waste, which is the worst-case scenario. So the question is, what is a more effective way to approach our plastic bottle conundrum that is, if, if we are going to lose revenue, we should make sure that we actually are reducing our plastic bottle usage, which we have literally no data for right now. So I, I think that really bears some investigation. It would be fruitful, I think, for the green team to reach out to them and begin to ask them what are their, what are their thoughts on it? I know that right now, we're talking about pay-as-you throw in Durham, and what, when we had our meeting with Waste Zero, what they said is, I mean, you can do educational programs ad nauseam, but you really don't reduce your waste. The minute you went to pay, pay-as-you throw, it was about a 45% reduction in waste. It's really significant in communities that gone to it. So I think it would be a good investigative tool to look at not just them, but other companies that have integrated, or what their thoughts are. And then the second one really to me, it takes me a little while as I sit through those budget presentations to figure it out, but to me, it always was, when we did the budget, it was the expenses minus revenue that comes in. And that's been the same way across both the town budget and the school budget. And so my question really is this, as I looked at the, the yellow sheets to me and, and where we've been, I mean, I, I think we have to put a, not a part-time, but a full-time counselor in. It does not make sense, I mean, when you looked at our presentation, every single thing always was about class size, or department size, and how we adapt to department size. So it was like, at the elementary, it will shift students from one school to the other. If, if something's overcrowded, we always hire another teacher. There's only one department that that not, has not occurred, and that is in counseling. And like, we've had this, multiple presentations, we're having a mental health thing occurring, and yet we have one of the highest caseloads of anybody in the state. So it, it, it's a counterintuitive thing to me that we keep making this a, a priority in terms of our budget goals, and yet we, when it comes to, to investing in it, we don't. So I think, my question would be like, all right, if we add the, the guidance counselor in, and we take the revenue minus the expenses, where are we? What's our net right now? So I think, can we live with that? So that's the number I'd really be looking for.
Right.
And along those lines, how we look at the Barrington revenue, and how we can maybe fund that counselor position, as well as the special ed position as well, how that would be taken out of there. Because I think if I had to prioritize all those yellow sheets, those really definitely are the top two that I'd like to see funded, because I think they're most important. If we, if we miss one child who's in crisis and something bad happens, I think everything else really is a moot point, because they could care less whether you're getting a new middle school, or you're getting an extra, you know, language teacher, or what have you. If we miss one student who's in crisis, I think that's, that's huge. And I, I would just hate to kind of have that on our shoulders down the road, because we didn't want to spend the money that I think we creatively can find. I think we, we're really good at getting creative and finding ways to fund programs that we see value in. And I'd like to see that, that, those two positions funded.
Okay. I, I agree completely with the talk about the counselor. Just looking on the years that I've been on the school board, mental health has always been one of our priorities. And then I look at what we've been asking counselors to do through the years, and that job has grown, that job responsibility, that job definition. And by nature, if you're using the same amount of ratios, you're not going to be as effective. So I really support that. On the water bottle thing, so my take on it is that it used to be, we would buy these water bottles, and people would, we'd make money from it as a school district, but somehow we maybe took a little pride in we recycled them. And maybe that allowed us to say, you know, it's okay, we're making money on the plastics, we're doing this, and we're recycling them. But that's not true anymore. That plastic is in our environment, and the creation of the plastic, and where the plastic is winding up. And more and more, it's recognized, the plastic is in all of us. Studies are showing because that plastic doesn't break down, it's in our ecosystems, and the fish are eating it, and our meat are eating it, and we eat it. And studies are showing, and, and there are a lot of diseases that we have no idea why we are seeing cancers that we didn't see before, and autoimmune diseases. I just think we're at a point, whether we're making money off of plastic or not, for the sake of the world, we need to say, hey, we don't want to be a part of that game. And we talk about our middle school, and we want it to be in quotes, green and whatever. This is low-hanging fruit. Get rid of plastic bottles, whatever the revenue is from that. It's, it's, it's like, I mean, it's not the equivalent, but it's kind of like, you know, diamonds in Angola with, you know, blood diamonds, or it's selling weapons or bullets. It's, it's bad, and I don't think we should be a part of that game. And I think we should find revenue or cut spending elsewhere.
Denise?
Just because Kenny, I know you weren't at, you weren't able to be at the budget hearing. What Doris said is that kids are bringing their own in. So we're not reducing, we're not reducing the use of plastic at all, which if we were, then I would be totally for it. What, all we're doing is we're reducing, they're, they're buying it at Market Basket or wherever, instead of buying it at school. So we're still generating, as Al said, we're still generating as much plastic waste as we ever have been, but somebody else is getting the revenue from it. And, you know, where I am all in favor of reducing it, it, it just sounds like this isn't the way that is going to have that impact. And I guess that's my.
But so I disagree with that. We, I mean, I think that, and maybe I missed that, but I think we do sell, sell things in plastic, and that there is people buying it in plastic at our schools, or at our sporting events, or whatever. And certainly, we have no control on what someone does when they're going to the grocery store. But to me, it's a very demonstrative message to say, hey, we don't have plastic here, and this is the reason why. And, and that's how change occurs, is people take a stand, and they explain where that stand, what, what the reasoning behind that is. And right, if someone buys their water at Market Basket, you know, we have, we have no kid coming to us, but I don't think we should be competing with Market Basket or providing that service or that opportunity. But that's just me.
Well, that's good to me. I mean, our, this, this agenda item is to raise questions, and clearly that's going to be a question we're going to have to, to deal with. We're probably not going to resolve it tonight, but certainly that's, I think the issue's out there.
I think if we're thinking about spending, or reducing revenue, or spending money to reduce waste, we should be thinking about, is targeting plastic water bottles where we get the most value for that? Or is there someplace else where spending $35,000 or $50,000 reduces the amount of natural gas, or something else that we use that produces greenhouse gas, or something else? Is, if we're going to spend that money on an environmental cause, is that the biggest bang for the buck?
And I was just, what I was saying is like, if you're trying to reduce the use of plastic, is your program effective?
Right.
At achieving your goal? So that's, I mean, again, that's what I keep coming back to. And with recycling, and I, you know, hate to throw this in because I am on this committee, that's a recycling committee, but it was always easy to recycle because you made revenue off of it. And the paradigm has shifted, and now you don't make revenue off of recycling. It costs you money to do solid waste. So everybody's scrambling to figure out what is an effective mechanism to balance fiscally responsible programs with environmentally responsible. And I think it's a, a really interesting question that we can pose, particularly to students, how, let's study how we can work on this, or what is an effective way to do this? And I think, I think there's a lot to be learned from it this year.
Yeah, I thought that whether, whether we could get like a baseline of how much plastic we, I mean, I agree with your point, Michael, that this shouldn't be the only question we look at, but if this is a question before us, how, what is the baseline? How much plastic are we using? What would be a goal that you could set to, you know, could you, you know, could you, could you have that, you know? And maybe, maybe us not selling the bottles might be part of it, but it also might be as a community saying, we really have to change our behavior, and, and so buy maybe in water, maybe, you know, having more access to bottles, you know, and then set, set kind of goal that you could measure, so like have a metric and say, you know, could we cut in a year, could we cut that consumption in half? Brian?
Well, you also have to keep in mind that waste and, not to beat a dead horse, but waste and recycling, it's a dynamic industry, where technology is always changing. Five years from now, they could be totally changing how they break down plastic and everything else, and it might be cost-effective then. So I mean, I don't want to say never, ever again, you know, we can't get rid of water bottles. I think we can, but in the right situation, you know?
It's a commodity.
It is, it's a commodity. It's like, it's like wheat, pork bellies, and orange concentrate, you know? It's, it's, it goes with the market. So I, I think five years from now, we'll be having a totally different conversation than we are tonight, or this year, I should say. But I, I agree with Michael at least, that if we're going to look at it, let's look at it, you know, not as that particular product, but how, what's most effect, what's the most efficient use of our funds, or most efficient savings of our funds?
If you were to say to the green team, what would you do with $50,000?
I'd actually like to ask, get the idea of the students to see, because I'm going to bet, out of all the students we have in the school, someone's going to come up with an outstanding idea on what to do, because they have in the past, right? So.
Okay. So that.
I think the, the point about understanding the revenue side is really important. We, we tend to throw a lot around the word, impact, and that word makes me cringe here now, because I don't know what the mathematical definition of impact is. So if we're going to use that term, I would like to know what, how we're defining it. Also on the revenue side, I don't understand how the state, additional state funding for all-day kindergarten flows. At one point, I thought that money was flowing directly to towns and not to the district directly, and I think it'd be helpful to understand how that, how that fits together.
Other questions? Okay.
Good. Got it. Thanks.
Okay, now we're to the policies. Denise? You want to make the motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion for First Read, for JLF, Reporting Child Abuse and Neglect, IKFC, Alternative Diploma for Students with Cognitive Disabilities, and ILD, Non-Educational, Non-Academic Questionnaires, Surveys, and Research.
Can we move back? Denise, is there a second? Brian? Okay.
Okay. And then.
Questions about the, Denise?
Well, just a comment in terms of our, and I, just in terms of feedback from the rest of the board, in terms of our new sort of presentation, in terms of trying to show where it's an existing policy to be deleted, or, you know, like if it's a, if it's a state school board association policy. School Board Association policy, and how that worked, as you were sort of reviewing the policy, if it was clear what we were doing, or if it was just more confusing. And it was, it was discussed in the minutes, that basically, what we're doing, if an existing policy is to be deleted or replaced by a newer version, that complete strike-through will be done on the version to be deleted, and underlining to be done on the version, replacing it, to sort of show, you know, where the, where this particular policy you're looking at is coming from. So, anyway, if anybody has any comments about the new, sort of, the new format, if it's making it clearer, or if it's just not helping, or whatever, you can let us know.
Question? Just, like, I'm looking at, say, IKFC. If we're deleting the entire policy, what's the replacement policy? Is it listed in here, or is that already one?
So, for IKFC...
Or any of them, it's just, that's the one I'm just happening to pick out, it's on my screen, so.
Did you, did you figure it?
No, I mean, I just don't know, like, I see it's all lined out, but where is it?
So that's the old, I think that's the old policy, I don't even have that one in front of me, right here. The one that it's, the one that's in red, Alternative Diploma for Students with Significant Cognitive Disabilities, that's what is being, that is what's replacing the old one.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So the new one is before, the one's getting deleted.
I don't even know.
Right.
It's got all the strikeouts in it, but.
So that policy is actually getting renamed, then? It looks like, because that's in red. The Alternative Diploma for Students with Significant Cognitive Disabilities?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that that one has been updated by the state, is my understanding. I have to go back to my notes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an up, it's an updated version from New Hampshire School Board Association that was reviewed and revised by Catherine.
Okay.
I have a question about the Reporting Child Abuse or Neglect policy.
Which one is that?
I, JLF, it's the first one.
Okay.
I, I guess I didn't actually read the minutes, so I probably should have started there, but I assume this is being driven by legal changes, or is this a, is this just a, we think this is best practice, or what was the driver for the changes here?
Again, I believe that that was, yeah, legal, and again, it was reviewed by Catherine.
So I guess my general question here is, the way I read this, puts a lot more responsibility on individual district employees to determine, well, to, first of all, to notify the state, and then also to make a determination of if that employee thinks that abuse is likely to occur within 24 hours, and then the onus is also on that individual employee to contact local law enforcement.
So, that, it's legally...
That is state, that was.
It's legally a responsibility, anyway.
Right, so this was...
I've got to find the right one.
So this policy, there were state law changes, and it very much stated that it is the professional responsibility to report directly to department, and then that clause about if that immediate, you know, sense of danger is there, again, for them to report it. And then we have, I think, I don't know if it's state or not, maybe Denise or Tom remembers, but we also did want to include our whole administrative staff, so there's that supplement of reporting it to the district as well.
Yes.
That's there. But it was driven by state.
Yeah, we actually have, we've always had an internal reporting process when a report is made, and there's, there's a form that we asked employees who are making those reports, so that, so that the administrators know when a report is being made. Clearly, there is always the option, someone can make an anonymous report if they feel that that's necessary, but we've always tried to maintain that, so that we, we know what reports are coming out of our schools.
Yeah, and the reference there, at the bottom, where we typically will reference our own school board policies, here, this one is also referencing the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, which is a tip-off that there's legal language that we need to have in our policy that's adopted into our policy.
Right, that section of the policy didn't change, as far as I can tell. So that was, that didn't indicate to me there was a legal change. What is the nature of the training that staff receive?
We do a policy review process every year with all of these, and kind of go through what the actual reporting mechanism is. Counselors are generally considered the resource that people go to if they're kind of wrestling with whether it's something that would warrant a report. But the, the training is basically, at the beginning of the year, we review the policy, we review the form, we remind people of their responsibility as a mandatory reporter, and then make, make the appropriate resource people available if people have questions or concerns about particular cases.
And what's the setting for that?
For...
Where does that, that, that...
The training, the, the initial training takes place at the, at staff meetings at the beginning of the school year, when we have multiple policies that we make sure everybody reviews, they're given them ahead of time, they read them, everybody has to sign off that they've seen it and, and understand it. They give an opportunity to ask questions, we bring it back to a subsequent staff meeting. The individual conversations, like with an individual person as a particular case, it would be, that would be more of a private setting, where they would go to the counselor's office to ask them, this is something I am concerned about, is this something that I should report?
So every single district employee in every single department is included in that?
Yes, at the beginning of, yes. Everybody, there's, there's a core set of policies that we review. In fact, Catherine can kind of talk about that, there's 10 of them that we make sure every year we review.
Yeah, so every year, at the beginning of the year, we review as an administration which policies need to be reviewed. Principals go over all the policies with the staff, and they can have a copy of them as well, and they sign that they've received them and understand them. At the same time, there's other policies that might require additional training, or staff have more questions about it. So for example, we did bring in DCYF last year to the middle, high school, to do some additional training, because there were questions and, questions and thoughts around some of the, the information. So they came in, Heather Mackinoff set that up. So we provide the initial training, we do follow-up. There's also, one of our policies, sexual harassment policy requires additional training, there's a video staff have to watch every so many years, so principals do that with their staff as well.
And, Michael, I, I think the policy did change to reflect the law, because it used to be that it was reported to the principal, and scratch out is that reporting to the principal, and now the reporting immediately goes directly to the DCYF. So that is, that reflects the legal change.
The legal references themselves did not change, so that...
No, but the law changed.
Within, without changing a section number or anything.
Okay. But, but our policy is now reflecting the current law. I, I don't know if, and I believe the law changed that.
Yeah, the guidance around the law, the interpretation of the law. So that's what can change. So our policy, when we researched our policy compared to the New Hampshire School Boards Association, to compare to other districts, some of them had language such as ours, but then we investigated it more, I pulled some information out from DCYF in a study they had done, and they very explicitly did state in there, it should be mandatory reporters to DCYF with secondary notification to the administration. So that, in our policy, we updated to reflect that most current language from DCYF, which was from the law.
And my memory of our discussion is, the logic of that is, the more layers you have between...
Right, yes.
The, seeing, seeing something that's disturbing, and then you're reporting it, the more layers of, the less likely it is to go forward.
It is, and there's an investigation part of this that we're not supposed to do. So the more you, the more layers you add, the more questions and comments people have, and really, it needs to be DCYF that takes that role on. So our counselors do often support our staff, or administrators support our staff, if we have to make a call, but we are all mandatory reporters. In New Hampshire, everyone's a mandatory reporter, not just educators or health professionals.
Does that extend to volunteers?
Everybody, everybody's a mandatory reporter. It's very interesting.
And how is that provided to folks that aren't part of the staff at the beginning of the year?
So volunteers and those kinds of people, so they go through a process with Teresa Peroya, where they go through confidentiality and those kinds of things, so that's handled at her level. Volunteers don't get the same level of training, but they have a contact within the building that they know that they go to, should they have any concern. So we would then, if they weren't comfortable with the policy, or knew the policy, we would instruct them on what they needed to do. We don't have volunteers that are typically on their own with students either. They're always with staff.
Okay.
Yeah, they're always with staff.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that really caught my eye was the, the obligation to make the determination about, about imminent danger, and the decision...
Yeah.
Having, having the decision to involve local law enforcement be a distributed decision that's on the, a burden on every single district employee is a lot. That's, that's a major responsibility.
Mm-hmm. It is. We have very supportive local law enforcement, though, and we have a good connection. When we have concerns, we do sometimes make a referral, then we immediately contact them, and they let us know if they need to...
And that's almost, almost what I would think that, a more straightforward default would be, to always notify local law enforcement.
Oh, yeah, you have to, with certain conditions that you have to. DCYF will also say, we've got this, we're contacting them, we're getting them involved. They also give us direction on what our next step should be as well. Because we also don't want to impede or impact any sort of investigation that might occur. So we take the guidance from them, but there are specifics around reporting, principals have to report certain things as well to local law enforcement, should they happen in the building.
I also think it's important to note that, that when you call into DCYF, that they send the dispatch, takes you through a whole series of questions to help kind of probe, and, and they will also assist in determining if there's any validity to the concern.
Yeah.
So there is a whole process that they take you through, so the, the simple act of calling to make a report doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to result in some action.
Exactly, yeah.
I believe Michael asked, I think it was last year, are we also, as a board, mandatory reporters?
Yeah, we're all mandatory reporters in New Hampshire. Everybody is, yeah.
I thought we weren't.
The way, the way it reads, the law reads, is everybody in New Hampshire's a mandatory reporter. And, you know, your, your neighbors probably don't realize that, but they are. There's no training for everybody on that, but we make very explicit in our district that we are all mandatory reporters.
So are we going to vote on these policies for First Read? Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving these policies for First Read, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. These policies are approved for First Read. Committee updates? Manifest committee, Matt?
Yep, so the, I, good news and bad news from the manifest committee tonight is, the good news is, everything was completely in order, but the bad news is, because we did it last week, there wasn't much for us to go through, and Al and I left it feeling like we, we should be working more, so let's try to get more manifests.
Denise?
Long Range Planning Committee has rescheduled the meeting, it's going to be the night, Monday, the 19th, which means that I will have to split my time between the middle school visioning and long-range planning, but, yes, so we'll, should have more updated information sometime after that meeting.
How soon after that meeting, do you think?
It depends on how quickly they can, because usually what we do is, they sort of present some initial figures that is reviewed by the committee, and then they kind of tweak whatever, and, and then Lisa Allison always does that presentation at the board, so I'm not sure exactly at what point, but at least to get some initial information, we might be able to get it in, I don't know, a couple of weeks or something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, my concern would be, the, the enrollment projections that the principals provided in the budget process do not match what long-range planning provided last year, in some cases by a significant margin, that potentially will result in staffing changes. So, you know, the further we go in the budget process, the more it would be nice to have that done.
Well, part of the problem is the breakdown. So if you actually, and I actually did go through all that, I think I have it in my bag, but, I actually went through, and if you combine Massway and MoHaramit, and you look at the total projection, the total projection is not, except for kindergarten, which we know kindergarten was, was quite a bit off, but the other projections were not terribly off. It's the, it's the breakdown, which is what we keep getting into, is how many kids at Massway, how many kids at MoHaramit. But that, you're right, because that, those are from November of 2017, so we definitely need those updated, updated numbers, so hopefully, we can get them soon. But at least we're having the meeting on Monday, so should be pretty soon.
And we have to, in terms of planning, when Lisa Allison's presentation to the board is, we have to figure out, because we don't want to wait, wait too long on that one.
Right, yeah.
So is it possible that she could be presenting maybe the second meeting in December? Is that possible?
Possibly, I can, I'll definitely find out tomorrow night, and can bring that back.
Okay.
Yep.
Al?
Wellness, Matt, and as you may remember, we had split up into smaller subgroups, and so we got together as the big group to report what the subgroups were doing. The Stop Loss Committee, they're going to go on field trip to Merrimack, and kind of see what they're working to, trying to, with employees, adding wellness stuff to them to kind of make them more aware of healthy life choices, and the idea is really to kind of control our insurance costs. And then, when we get back together, I think we're going to actually have representatives from the companies talking about kind of some of the programs that they have. In terms of policy, small subgroup reviewed the wellness policy, and made some changes and recommendations, and so that will be going to the policy committee, for you guys to look over. There was another group that did kind of mine through the data of our student risk policies, and I, were highlighting kind of the big changes that they saw, and I think one of the middle school teachers was taking some of those and putting out like, like newsletter things highlighting that, and so she was going to share that with elementary and the high school people, so that they also then could begin to put that out, so stuff like vaping, and, and there's one weird, where the kids are actually eating last breakfast, and all that kind of stuff. So that, that would be shared, and that, so each group wasn't just, or each level wasn't putting out their own, that they were kind of coordinating it, and, what's the one of the, what have I forgotten?
Mental healths.
Oh, mental health, actually, she reported that they'd come here and given their presentations, and also that had been mentioned, that the 29th was, was the big forum on mental health.
Others?
I have a follow-up to your, I, I think last year, we heard about how prevalent vaping was in the issue at the high school, and I don't know if that's something that maybe to present to the board about what's happening.
Bring it back, we're, we're, we're going back, each group is meeting, you know, the subgroups are going and meeting again, and working away, and then I think we're going to meet at the beginning of February as a collective group, but we can certainly get back about, about the vaping.
Yeah, specifically, the, the stuff that came from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is going to go right back to high, high school and middle school administrations to talk about how they might be going to act on that information, and vaping was one of the things. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment? No? Okay, future meetings, as indicated here. And so I think we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Made by Michael, seconded by Dan.
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, we are adjourned.